Good morning. We'll go ahead and get our board meeting started. And we'll start with introductions.
Introductions.
I'm Pat Moulton.
Pat Moulton.
Vance Cronny.
Joe Kirby, county administrator.
Ann McCarthy, fire chief.
Brian Lee, emergency manager.
Eric Kamilo, board recorder.
Pat Jackson, board coordinator.
This is Annabelle, did you get that?
Uh, yes, Annabelle.
Thank you. Kate Porcha with Cora.
Danielle Brown, interim, sorry, Kate, go ahead.
Kate Porcha with Cora, Benton County.
Welcome.
Danielle Brown, Benton County Health Department co-director.
Teresa Farley, board commissioner.
Mary Alwes, CEO.
Okay. Is that it, everybody? All right. We don't have any members of the public, as far as I can tell, so we'll turn it over to Joe to get us going.
Good morning, everyone. Happy Thursday. Let's see, what's on tap for our agenda today is Brian Lee and Chief McCarthy will be giving an update regarding the Emergency Operations Center and what's transpiring there. Danielle Brown will also give a brief update from the Health Department's perspective. And then we'll turn our attention to Kate Porcha, who is returning to have a follow-up conversation with the board concerning business grant loan program potentially funded by the county. I would also go on to say that, other than the updates, we do have a policy question to be posed to the Board of Commissioners by Brian Lee and Chief McCarthy. Brian, I think what we'll do is if you're okay with it, you and the chief can go ahead and give your update, then we'll have Danielle give her update, and then we'll swing back around to your policy question before we go on to Kate, if that works for you.
Perfect. Yeah, that works great for me. So I just, I'll start and then I'll turn over to Chief McCarthy to get his update. My main update is, actually, things are going really smooth here in the EOC. Our change to five-day operational period has been a really great success for most people in the room. They're really happy with it and they're getting tasks done. So we're really moving forward as a team, and you can really get a sense of that and watch things flow a lot better here. People are calmer, too. It's really nice. The other piece is that we did implement some aggressive safety precautions, so people are taking their temperature multiple times. We're doing major wipe downs and hand tampons everywhere and just being very cautious so we don't get everyone sick. And we're starting to plan for kind of a third EOC group to start slowly bringing in, you know, a couple at a time, just in case Ken's team or my team or various people become ill and we need other folks to fill in. So we're going to start doing that here pretty soon. Some other updates, this one is still in the works. There's a big change today, and we don't know the outcome yet, but the state is going to have basically what's called a medical resource hospital and coordinate all patient movements within our region. And our region, our six counties, it's Yan Hill, Polk, Marion, Lynn, Lincoln, and Benton. And Chief McCarthy and I, as well as many others, including Charlie and I know Danielle, all have a lot of concerns about this. But what that would basically look like is we would enter the number of beds that we have available or slots that are available, and someone out of Salem Health Hospital could tell us that we're receiving patients from, I guess, Salem, from Yan Hill, from anywhere within our region. And we don't really have a choice to decline that. So it's making PPE planning and resource planning extremely challenging. We just got news about that today, very preliminary news, and then we'll be hearing more information about it at a four o'clock call this afternoon. So that could greatly affect our plans for the fairgrounds, our plans for any other alternate care operations that we were planning on. It could be adjusted very quickly here, and it could really stretch our EMS agency extremely thin if we have to transfer people out or in. So it's going to be, it's going to be an issue. I'll have a financial report all squared away and an executive summary out to Joe on Friday, and I'm sure he'll administer that. And then that is actually about it. Our move to the new location is lined up. Thanks to Paul Lawson there at facilities. Everything's pretty much squared away for us in IT. Mario's doing a lot to get that set up. So everything's still on schedule and we'll be operating out of there, really beginning on next Monday. So those are my updates, and I'll loop back on that policy one here in just a little bit.
Brian, what counties were there, which you just mentioned? I missed a couple of them.
Which counties?
Yeah.
There's six counties, Yan Hill, Marion, Polk, Lynn, Lincoln, and Benton County.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, this plan is preliminary. It's usually used in cases of like an active shooter or a Mackausen incident, like a bus crash, where we can disperse patients throughout the valley pretty easily. That's what that model is set up for, and it makes sense for something like that. But for this, we are all very skeptical of how well this will work or if it will work at all. So just more to come on that.
All right, so following up on that, as the provider that has the ambulance service contract for the entire county, my concerns are also more also people shipping people into us, but us picking up someone in Corvallis, calling in and finding out that we have to take that person two hours away to a hospital bed to keep the balance throughout the region. With six ambulances, that would quickly deplete our resources. And it's not like a local event that we can easily ask for a task force of additional ambulances, because every other area is dealing with the same thing. Spreading out our resources like that is a huge concern. But yeah, so Brian and I have agreed that the five-day is the way to go at the EOC. It allows the objectives to be clearly understood, to be aggressively worked on, and to try to come up with pretty good and in-depth planning. There are some short-term wins, but most of what the EOC is producing is more of long-term plans. Examples of that, we have five areas that are being worked on. We have the surge in fatalities, and how do we plan for that? How do we get ahead of that? We do have today a refrigerated unit being delivered to our training facility site for the power and having that hooked up to help with the capacity per day that the county has to process fatalities. So we're looking at PPE usage. We have put together a group of representatives from all different aspects, the hospital, the fire, the clinics and such, so that it's very clear and agreed upon by that group who does and does not get PPE, so it doesn't look like the city or any particular individual has more say in it, just because they're working in the EOC. The vulnerable population, both the houseless and the elderly that may be sheltering at home that may need medications and/or food or whatever, we're working closely with the JIC to get that message out, to use the Recover website to identify those needs and how we address those issues. One of the tasks that was given to the liaison group this week was to create a master list of outside agencies that would want to have an update, who the one or two contacts are for that group, and then when the last time they were contacted. So we're not leaving people wondering what's going on, what's happening there. We're trying to be proactive and reaching out to them. So the initial EOC staffing, I believe, was right at 20 people. When we turned it over to Brian this week, we had pre-staffed 46, with a big piece of that being the Public Health Branch and everything they're working on. So it is growing, it is being productive, and we, I've been staying in contact with Brian throughout the week, just so I don't lose a week of information as I walk in again next week to be the EOC director. So, end of the day.
Danielle, one thing real quick before you hop off to your update on some of the things related to vulnerable populations within the city and what you were telling me the city is doing now to actively help that population.
So a few things. There were some do-it-yourself projects being built for hand sanitizing stations and such that were just showing up in parks. We had some concerns at first because there was no way of capturing spray water, a few other items. So Karen Emery from Parks has worked with them. They redesigned their systems, they can capture the gray water. We have put on signs that this is not possible, do not drink, all those type of typical things. We're coordinating with those individuals when the refill and emptying of those hand stations are to be done, so that we can shut down park trails and such, so that vehicle traffic is safe for those purposes. So instead of having to undo good work from private citizens, we've been working with them to get the outcome that both sides are happy with. We're looking at changing churches on a temporary basis from an A3 to an R1, so that we can temporarily use them as dormitories inside their already existing structures versus having to build additional structures. There would be a maximum occupancy based on square footage, and so those type of conversations are going on. The nice thing about that is that it does not look to solve the systemic problem of the houseless. It is the COVID issues and such, and so at the end of the event, when the church goes back into effect, we're not having to deal with dismantling tent cities and such that may have arrived that, you know, aren't in the overall master plan. So it's more of a structure for that. And then in all of the alternate care site planning, we are looking at if someone homeless were to become COVID positive but not be critical, only need minor care, they would be included in the alternate care sites for bed counts and such, so that we're not just putting them back out in the vulnerable population to, one, you know, have to fight the disease and the cold and whatever, and two, to not be exposing others. So we are looking at some of those different resources. We are trying to work with the JIC to reach out to any elderly who are sheltering in place and needing medications or food, to contact us through the Recover website, so that we're aware of those and can meet those needs as well. It's a really hard group to proactively reach out to, because we can't call every address and every phone number, so it's an outwardly casting net to try to get them to contact us.
Chief McCarthy, Joe Kirby, a question for you. You used a couple of designations that I'm assuming are zoning designations relative to churches. Just for clarification, are those city zoning designations?
That is correct, yeah. A3 is an Assembly 3, and R1 would be like a dormitory. So we'd be switching those on a temporary basis.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Brian or Chief McCarthy?
Thank you. It sounds like things are going smoothly, and I'm glad that the city is taking positive steps on the issues of the household population that's reassuring and reaffirming.
Yeah, all of the actions that I refer to are not city or county specific. It's just the overall EOC, you know, we were at the premise that we represent both. So we're definitely trying to report out and have every decision looked at from the overall and not just specify any one particular entity.
Thank you. I recognize that. However, when it comes to city building, that's still something you all have to do.
Correct, yes.
A question on the EOC. I'm really glad you went to the five-day shifts. A question that occurs to me is what goes on on the weekend as far as EOC activity?
Right, so for now, the EOC, I was just going to say, isn't fully activated on the weekend. Obviously, both Ken and I and Dave Buz, we are all available on the weekends, and available by phone or email. We're still catching up on things and doing things on the weekend. We're just not in full activation mode. That might change probably the next few weeks. We're just going to explore it, you know, one or two operational periods ahead. Ken and I have had dialogue about it. If we see a need for things to happen on the weekend, then we're going to start doing that a little bit more. And the weekend shift might be a real short, four hours a day, a few people, or only remote. We're kind of playing with different concepts there. So far, we have seen a huge need for a major FPD on the weekend outside of our normal coordination and planning, but we're going to keep a close eye on that.
One of the things about this type of EOC activation is that we do have the capability, and you see it all the time in the news and such, is to kind of project and graph out the future need versus an earthquake or something where you have, you know, immediate actions needed. So the planning is a much bigger piece of this than the immediate response.
Okay. Well, thank you. What's next, Joe?
I think, Commissioners, what we'll do is we're going to go ahead and have Danielle jump in with her update, because she may have information that may be relevant to the policy question that you're going to be asked by Brian. So Danielle, why don't you provide that update, and then we'll swing back to Brian and Chief McCarthy for the policy discussion.
Hi, good morning, everyone. So in addition to what Chief McCarthy and Brian have talked about, the big thing that I focused on this week, toward the end of this week, is getting the mental health branch up and going. I think we talked about that a little bit yesterday in the management meeting with the county. Kind of looking at it as a three-phase or three-focused between first responder response, response to open client who are already receiving services, and response to the community for individuals who may not be receiving services but need them, either due to COVID-19 or just have been undiagnosed and need treatment. So working on developing what that's going to look like. Sarah Hartstein is on a series of calls today around addressing the needs for the houseless individuals and how to support those folks. We are working hopefully closely with IHN to get some funding to help with some hotel costs. That's still a little bit up in the air, but we should have an answer to that by the end of the day. IHN is having an internal meeting, and we'll get back to it. I think they have their meeting this afternoon. My task for this morning is to read the second draft of the Mass Casualty Plan, the Mass Fatality Plan, so we can get that up and out. Chief McCarthy talked about having a refrigerated truck delivered to the EOC site today, along with the shelving at Home Depot for the refrigeration truck. So I think we're actually making quite a bit of headway in the public health branch and aligning our priorities with a larger EOC. And I think we've got some good feet on the ground. We'll need to expand our public health branch probably in the next week or so to address the growing needs for the homeless individuals and the mental health branch of the public health section under the operations branch.
Thanks, Danielle. I am glad to hear that there's progress on the houseless residents front and that IHN CTO and the funders stepping up. I also am happy to hear that mental health is getting an equal bit of attention, and I hope that behavioral health is as well. I'm not sure.
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. The other part about the houseless individuals, we have a weekly call with organ health authorities around our county financial assistance agreement, our funding that we get from OHA. So we're asking for some flexibility around using those funds that are earmarked for specific services. So we may be able to use some of that for addressing the homeless needs and the vulnerable population needs as well, in addition to the ongoing mental health and behavioral health needs. So as I call it three o'clock today, OHA has not given us a lot of clear direction. They've made kind of broad, general comments about, yes, you can use your money flexibly, but without any real direction or clarity.
That's good to know, thank you.
Any other questions for Danielle?
I just have one. This is Brian to piggyback on Danielle's piece. The OHA not only has given kind of that foggy guidance about what we can use the money on in that way, they said if you are going to use funding for non-congregate housing, so sheltering in houseless folks, things like that, or alternate care sites, some of those, and this is lovely state-federal language, may need preapproval. So a lot of may's and shoulds and maybes there, but that's, we're waiting to hear more guys. Every day this gets, I'm going to say slightly clearer, but there's more questions that come up as well. So before we spin up an alternate care site and have it blessed by the state, they have to get some preapproval, and that one's pretty easy, just some framework of a plan for the non-congregate housing or non-congregate shelters, as they describe it, which is kind of what we're talking about with the vulnerable population. That one also has to be preapproved if we want to get FEMA reimbursing on it. As for the IHN CTO piece, that's a, I think, a whole nother, another slice, but if we wanted to do it where the county fronts the cost, say for hotel rooms or something like that, or for the shelter site at the fairground, that would be something we have to get preapproved by the state. So I don't know what that looks like. They haven't given any real guidance on it other than that.
Brian, for the IHN CTO dollars, is that something FEMA would reimburse? It's coming out of their flexible fund, so it's not coming out of any dollars that have been identified for other services? Is that something we need to be pursuing with IHN CTO before we move forward with that?
We should probably at least find out while we're moving forward. I don't know if that's going to be reimbursable. If it's federal dollars of any kind, the answer is no, because we can't use them basically.
Oh, it's Medicaid money, so it would be several dollars.
Okay, so then no, that one's not reimbursable. If we spend general fund dollars, it is reimbursable.
Gotcha, that makes sense, okay. Yeah, Medicaid money's all going to be several, so.
Brian, can you give me a definition of non-congregate housing?
Yeah, I've been, I've been working on that for the last week, and I have not had a clear definition, because from what I understand, congregate housing would be everyone grouped together in one location. So this is describing everyone sheltered but not grouped together, all in the same shelter. So there's questions right now to FEMA about do alternate care sites count as non-congregate housing or are they together? So we're working on answers still. So at this point, no, I can't give you a solid definition, and that's why I'm trying to figure out right now. They mainly are talking about people who test positive for COVID-19, who don't require hospitalization, but need isolation? So some way that they're, as far as I understand, they're not saying they're putting everyone in a giant shelter like after a hurricane. This, from what I gather, is for putting them possibly in a hotel or a dormitory or something like that. I'm literally looking on the FEMA website, it kind of breaks some of this down for this COVID-19 emergency and who the target population is, and it isn't exactly what we described. People over 65 with underlying health conditions or asymptomatic high-risk individuals needing social distancing as a precautionary measure. So it sounds like that group, if we do save funds, a hotel rooms or a dormitory situation, that sounds like that is, but we need to, sheltering spaces should be determined by the applicant requesting system, such as motels, hotels, dormitories, or other forms. So that, that they are describing basically a dormitory situation is non-congregate housing. So we would have to get preapproval, preauthorization, that we would be able to receive reimbursement, and then I'm sure, it's not stated here, I'm sure there's some other groups we have to jump through rather than just purchasing the hotel rooms once we've got approval. I'm guessing there has to be more thorough public health and safety plan, a medical support plan, possibly a feeding plan. I'm sure there's other string of tasks to this. I just haven't been able to find very direct answers yet. So I'll keep digging this one out and let you guys know here as quickly as possible, and I'll share a resource with Danielle and her team, because they're the ones mainly taking lead on it. And they'll, they can work with the finance section to try to cash out the non-tertiary language here.
Okay.
Brian, for what Sarah's working on with the homeless and vulnerable population, those plans would all be part of that larger plan, in terms of the case management, the medical support, the food, the shelter, the state health and safety, all of that is in the plan that Sarah's working on.
And there are jurisdictions that have already set up non-congregate settings for some of these vulnerable people. I know that that's been the case in Lincoln County, Marion County, Oklahoma, so maybe some other expertise we could draw from, or have they just gone ahead and done this without knowing the funding stream?
I'm going to, I know Lincoln County's situation, and I know for a fact that they went ahead and just did it without knowing the funding stream. So they did a motel voucher situation, which is basically, you know, paying for motel rooms under certain parameters, but now they're asking, you know, through JD Damaris, the emergency manager over there, they're asking the state, the Board of Commissioners, and the legal council is trying to ask the state what they need to do to get reimbursement. And the state is being a little bit flighty on it, and they didn't know they were doing that process. So there is some process, but it's not clearly defined what that is yet. So I'll try to find some more clear answers here, definitely by the end of the week, but it's not clear what that looks like. I'm guessing if the plan that Sarah's putting together, if we did say, yes, we're going to, we'd like reimbursement, certain factors to reimbursement on, see this dormitory situation that we have with OSU or these hotel rooms we're going to rent, and here's what we're doing, here's the survey, here's why, and here's our solution for feeding, case management, as Danielle was describing, and everything else, then I'm guessing they'll say, that looks good, we've given you preauthorization to go ahead and do that. But I don't know the timeline or the process to actually, to actually do that.
Okay. I believe in being careful and making sure that we take care of our financial resources, but I also know that what we're talking about is people, and that they are, some of them are out there, they're vulnerable right now.
Absolutely.
And Brian, FYI, the end of the week is tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm aware of that one.
Okay.
I'm looking up answers right now as we're talking, so.
All right, any other questions for Brian or Danielle?
So I do have a question for you guys, and this may go back to being a policy question, but I just want to put it out there. One of the barriers we keep pushing up against is transportation. We're getting either outwit folks or people that have tested positive or are awaiting test results, to and from doctor's appointments, to and from if we decide to go hotel rooms, to those kinds of situations, and we don't have a clear direction for that. So that's something I think we, as a county, probably need to have a conversation about. Is that something we're willing to use county cars for? Is that a risk we're wanting to use that for? I just, we have, you know, we have all these county cars that are sitting and not really being used right now, but I have being used right now, but I have some concerns with asking staff to transport people who are either positive or actively ill, and we don't know if they're positive. But that's one of the barriers we keep bumping up against, and we do not have a solution for.
Well, that's certainly something we, we should see what, what we have, what our possibilities are, and what makes sense. First thought that popped into my mind is it would certainly be nice to have the quick turnaround testing that may be available sometime in the near future, so that the frontline folks have a better idea of who they're dealing with, and what the, what the real situation is.
Danielle, this is Joe Kirby. I think it's certainly important to get the board's view on this. I do think it's more of an operational slash tactical decision, but it certainly can be informed by the, the board.
Well, I certainly have been hearing this concern from folks for the last 10 days or so. It has not, I think it's getting closer to being a realistic concern right now. Everyone's trying to plan for it. There are volunteer states that are wanting to help, but they want to live on heightened, they want to know what the best approach is, they want to know what's going to be reimbursable, it's not. So I think that it is a technical issue, but I definitely believe we need to pitch in and help get these people to medical services when they're oriented, or to set down to whatever alternative care sites we end up providing.
When we had our deputies that we thought were exposed, we learned that there's an enormous process, basically the vehicle is quarantined with them, and there's some guidelines from the state that impede about how to, I guess, decontaminate a vehicle, and it's not as easy as it sounds, so there's a lot more to it than just transporting people around, and vehicles that aren't designed for that extent. So that's something we have to factor into a plan for.
Right, and actually Chief McCarthy and Will Boucher, the EMS chief, brought a piece of equipment to our attention, that was basically a hydrogen peroxide fogging machine that could decontaminate not only ambulances and police cars and rooms, but it can also decontaminate a lot of equipment, including PPE, like N95s and downs. Just the only downside, other than the price tag, was that it's not available for another seven to 10 weeks. So probably after, or after we're through the major sick of this all, who wouldn't be receiving it until then? So, but I do agree, and we've talked about other, if we have to do emergency transport of even suspected cases or unknown cases in county vehicles or dial-a-bus, the problem still, like Scott just described, is whether or not we can actually decontaminate a vehicle properly, and then what PPE does that driver need or want? And then, this is more of a Vance Mary question, is what level of liability, if we're having volunteers drive them, are we taking on, and do we want to? What does it look like, basically? And that is more of that policy level. But otherwise, I don't know if we can decontaminate them enough just to actually be considered truly decontaminated and safe for use again.
Right, is the chief still there?
I am.
How do you decontaminate the ambulance now?
So we have on order, which we hope to get any day, a more directional wand, a couple of them, that we can use the same basic hydrogen peroxide mix and just spray over it. We do not have the fogger system. Right now, it just wipes after every incident and such that we're dealing with, so it's not a great solution. The thing about the fogger is it takes about four hours after you fog an area to make it to where you can go back into it, so you'd have to have a fairly large surplus of cars that, you know, one goes up, transports, doesn't need, comes back, gets fogged, assuming you can get one, and then it would have to sit for four hours before the next person could occupy it.
Okay. So, Brian, help me out here. What I'm hearing is this is going to be a recurring event, so they're already talking about later in the fall if it comes back? Is that what you're going to do as well?
Yes, so based on epidemiological data, there's at least going to be a second wave, which hopefully with all of our social distancing and everything will be better, but if we release the people back in, say, just June, just, I'm throwing out arbitrary dates, say, okay, we're through the most of the fatalities and infections, there could be a second little spike that happens, and it's unknown how big that would be or what that looks like. And then, again, unless we have a good vaccine that works, this is going to come back again in the fall, because now that it's community spread, it's not, we're not going to be able to quickly eradicate it in any reasonable timeline. And then what it looks like in the fall, there could be immunity built up, but it's highly questionable and unknown right now, the data's not clear. So they're anticipating another wave of this next, you know, December, January timeline with the flu season.
Yes, my point was the seven-week delivery on the, and I'm not going to pronounce it right, whatever that decontaminator or fogger is, it may still be worth looking into it and getting some price quotes for it, even if it is seven or eight weeks, because we need to be more prepared when it comes back around, but I think that's enough.
Thirty thousand dollars per unit.
Nice.
You guys are suggesting one unit, or what do you think we'd need?
Well, really, and that would be more Will Boucher's zone, and I actually talked to Charlie and Bruce, and they were supportive of us purchasing it as well, but this was, this is before we found out the timeline, and we can dive more in, but the bottom line is, in a perfect world, we'd have two, so we could do a whole room, or do more than one ambulance, or more than one police car, or other transport vehicle at a time, or combine them to do a bigger space. So that way, we weren't locked in having one, we could do multiple. I mean, the more is better, but realistically, two should be sufficient for what we're trying to deal with. That's just my opinion. And the CDC did post guidance on the best way to decontaminate vehicles and PPE and everything else, and that fogger device was basically the number one, or one of the best ones to use.
The other thing about the fogger device is, is it not reimbursable, is it?
Yes, the fogger is reimbursable, because under no other circumstances would we be tied in that, basically.
The other thing about the fogger, and what they like about it, is it, not only is viral, but it's weapons of mass destruction, so it has the capability of cleaning a room from a lot of different types of materials. The other thing to think about on that is during the summer, as it slows down, if we get them, they do require a solution to work. They don't, you know, make it themselves, so we'd want to get a stockpile, and I don't have the pricing on that, of the hydrogen peroxide material that you use in the fogger.
Hey, hey, Chief, could I ask you and Brian to, to work together and come up with a proposal of how many we need, or what we need, and how much of a stockpile, and if we can let those go to pass, and that would give you something to talk to the board about, and see if that's the direction, whether we really can narrow that price as much as possible.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. I appreciate it.
So Sheriff, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to bring the conversation back around. Once again, I think that's a item that should be dealt with by EOC personnel. We can certainly bounce things off of the board as it relates to policy, but I really think that conversation needs to be taken back to the EOC and figured out, as opposed to trying to resolve it as part of our conversation today. Danielle, I'm not sure we have answered your question specifically at this point. Are you needing additional information at this point from the board?
Yeah, I think I need some direction from Vance and Mary, exactly as Brian indicated, what are the financial implications and the potential liability risks if we use county cars, either with volunteers, or ask county staff to act as transport providers for individuals in these situations? So not necessarily from the board, but perhaps Mary and Vance could help provide some direction, or some kind of pros and cons, risks and benefits, so we can help make a decision.
Okay, I think, why don't you take that offline with Vance and Mary?
Yep, we'll do. We'll do, thank you.
Danielle, as part of your update, anything else you want to provide before we circle back around to Brian's policy discussion?
No, I have nothing else, unless there are other questions for me.
Okay, Brian, back to you.
Okay, so my, I guess my policy ask or discussion is, and this will be sort of that's support Danielle and what she presented, is if we, if we do work out this process, it sounds like, or is the board of commissioners supportive of purchasing or paying for non-congregate sheltering, is a term I'll start using, but basically hotel rooms or dormitory rooms, or some sort of situation, to help folks who need to be quarantined or isolated? And if so, I guess the main question there initially is just, are we supportive of it? And the other one is, how supportive are we, and how far down do we, do we actually ultimately want to go? I mean, basically, how much money are we willing to put into that resource wise? I know there's some exploratory options that we could try, to target the most vulnerable as they are identified by the team or committee. There's different ideas there, and we can operationalize that a little more with the EOC group and Danielle's branches, but just broadly speaking, are you supportive of that idea? And even if we don't get reimbursement, if we do, obviously that'll help a lot.
And Brian, if I can just add to that a little bit, you had mentioned for the people that need to be quarantined or isolated due to a COVID positive test or whatever, that would fall, I think, more under the alternate care site and how we're taking care of them, because that has to be a piece of that. So are you asking for those that are possibly just vulnerable to have now, from cases, and so, and then, you know, so how would we go about determining who would qualify for that? If that's the direction you guys want to go?
Yes, yes, that's exactly my question is, would we want a small committee? I know there's already that branch, so we could let them do it, do some sort of transparent process, agreed upon process, but it doesn't take 10 weeks, but takes a day to decide who the target population is. And yes, to Ken's question and answer, I'm thinking more of a non-diagnosed positive, possibly just someone who may be sick, may not be sick, or may not have symptoms at all. That's the group I'm talking about. If someone was symptom, then I am talking more about alternate care sites, and that's sort of a separate plan that we'll work in on already.
So Brian, will we get that clear again? You are assuming that we have the green light for an alternate care site for anyone that has been confirmed positive, and that needs to be kind of in that position of being quarantined while they are ill in a stable place that has hygiene and sanitation, or stepping down from going out of hospital? That's, that's already been decided, but you're wondering about how much down the road, down that spectrum to go, in terms of helping people shelter?
Yes, yes, because in looking at the FEMA guidance as my base, alternate care sites if you're positively diagnosed, that is exactly that. An alternate care site is totally separate, separate mechanisms there. I am more focused to confirm what you're saying on non-diagnosed individuals and sheltering needs for the vulnerable. How far do we want to go? Are we supportive of doing any, and then how far?
Well, what is the discuss so far in the social service community is sheltering the most medically fragile or vulnerable population, especially the men, because the women are pretty much cared for and stable where they are in the United Methodist Church. But the men, and from what I understand, about 15 men in this category, are, they're intense, and they're outdoors and dealing with the rain, and they, some of them are very ill, cancer diagnoses, or diabetes, or one thing or another. So I don't think it's an unlimited number, and I think it's so, I would be supportive of helping out somehow, but I think IHN CTO also has a role playing very clearly, so it's got to be a joint effort.
Okay, and my thought there, and my only words of caution, and again, that might be more of a vast, and we can focus on that a little later, is if we are agreeing to shelter the vulnerable population in general, then it's men, women, children, anybody, because it has to be AD compliant and inclusive and equitable across the board. But even though, I get what you're saying, though, yeah, the women's shelter is sort of up and running and pretty, I'm going to say stable, and they kind of got a good process and a good system, and I get the men's piece, because that is the, currently the less stable point. And I know Julie has some more visibility on which populations and which providers and everything like that, and she's in that branch under Danielle and their heart theme anyways. I'm just, if we are supportive of it, then that kind of gives me an idea of, okay, we can allow the branch to pursue it more aggressively and come up with solutions in a, in a more compressed timeline.
I think that, again, I'm going to say this again, that IHN CTO and Good Sam have to be at the table, because these are people that do have historically cycled in and out of the emergency department, and if we want to keep them out of the emergency department stable while we're dealing with COVID-19, it behooves us, from a public health standpoint, to take action. And I think that we, there's a way to come up with criteria to address this that would be equitable and rational.
This is Joe Kirby. I'd just like to interject a couple of comments. Brian, number one, as we're talking about these issues, there's a lot of variabilities here, and so, you know, for me, especially when we're committing potentially significant county dollars, I think what we need is something in writing that specifically states what action you are taking, and what population it's intended to serve. There's a lot of conversations that occur throughout the day, and sometimes these things evolve, and there's misunderstandings. So for me, at the end of the day, really being able to put something in front of the board that says, this is how we're defining our response to this. And so, it's not that we need to spend hours on that, but I think, you know, there's got to be something more specific in writing as to what the commissioners are signing up for. Also, a cautionary note, none of us know how long this is going to, to go on, and just a concern from the budgetary perspective as to how long we're committing to certain things, so just keeping that in mind.
Right, right, and I will, if we got the general, yes, we're supportive of it, then I would basically direct that from the director's side to Danielle's team, say, let's get something more concrete in writing, start looking at order of magnitude, and put together that menu of options, and what this actually looks like conceptually. So I would, I would just kind of direct it to our team, because they're, they have more knowledge and expertise and resources to understand the problem better, so we can define the problem a little clearer, and define the solutions, the various solutions, and then bring that to the board for a yes, no, that we can operationalize. I just wanted to get a general, yes, we're supportive of it, so we can start dedicating more resources, because Danielle mentioned, as we move forward, next week and the week after, her branches, especially that vulnerable populations group, work group, will start to expand more and more, the more and more we dedicate resources to them. I just want to make sure we're good with that, so we can expand our personnel to focus on that.
Brian, this is Pat. I'm supportive in general of the idea, and I appreciate Joe's comment about getting things defined, so we have some notion of what we're signing up for, so that would be my, my thought.
Okay.
Annabelle, do you want to weigh in on this?
I'm sorry, what? I didn't hear you.
Do you want, do you want to weigh in on the non-congregate?
No, I'm in agreement with it all, it's, it's fine, I think, but again, we need to have clarity in terms of what it is we're paying for.
Okay.
Coming in next week as the EOC director, this will obviously be not resolved by tomorrow, with something along the lines of one person identified housed, fed, equals X amount of money per week, and then looking at what the capacity is for bearing that over a period of time, and having a over a period of time and having a plan in place if there's one, or if there's 10, or if there's 20, here are the priority list process that we're using to identify those. Those two pieces seem to be what you're looking for. Is there anything I'm missing on?
Ken, that, that sounds good to me. Sam, did you have a comment?
I think that that is right on.
Okay.
And I do want to, I do want to add, Brian, I think that I, I am having a rising level of angst about Benton County making decisions about who goes into these facilities. I am, I think from a liability perspective, it would be prudent to push that, those decisions off to our service providers and perhaps think more about Benton County providing funding, if that's the direction the board wants to go, and then allow our service providers to come up with a prioritization and a determination of how and where and which individuals from the given population are going to be selected. I think that's probably a task that our service providers are already much better equipped to perform than Benton County.
Okay. Vance, I appreciate that clarification because I had some concerns about, okay, who, who called the last shot? And if we haven't got everybody on the same page, then we can get into some real problems.
I think that's just a
This is Danielle. That's something that, that's, that's something that Sarah is actually working on right now with the service providers to create that prioritization list. Not that we're owning it, she's just helping them walk through it.
I like that clarification.
I got it. I got to qualify it, weren't you, man?
Well, and I think that's a good model of figuring out what, what the role of the county is and then who our partners are to actually implement what we want done. So I think with this discussion, we're, we've helped define the issue and look forward to having more discussion next week. Brian and Ken, is that enough direction?
Yes, it is. That's plenty, especially with Danielle on and Joe and Vance coming. I got a direction forward. And I know Ken's on too, so he heard it. So we are, we are covered.
Great.
Oh, thanks, Joe. Let's see, I think we're moving on to Kate Porche, who would be on deck and has been waiting patiently.
I got it. Yeah.
Kate, there you are. Good morning.
Thanks so much for having me this morning. If it sounds okay, I'm going to get texts out of here. We'll see if this works. I did put together some brief talking points that I thought could help us go through this item. And I've emailed that link to everybody for the folks that are on the phone. But I also am going to share my screen here. So let's see if I can get this to, I actually tested this this morning and it worked pretty well. Oh, oh, can't share unless I'm, it says the organizer has to make me the presenter if I want to share my screen.
Can we, who's the organizer?
I suggest that we don't attempt to try that live. It is something that I know is possible. We got it to work yesterday in the JIC, but I suggest that we don't try that live right now.
Totally fine.
So commissioners, check your email for a link that Kate's referring to.
Yeah, I'll talk to these and I sent it to you guys. So it's nothing fancy. It's really just some talking points that I wanted to go through. So no worries at all. So I first wanted to take a moment and really I just had, I put together these like six brief slides. I first wanted to go over with you guys what our team has been working on because I think it's going to help set the stage for the policy discussion and some of the feedback that I am hoping to get from the commissioners today. So first of all, Catherine from our staff has been working full-time out at the Emergency Operations Center. She's sort of taking the lead out there and heading up the Economic Recovery Team, which is part of the liaison group. All of our staff, Jerry, Heather, myself, all of us are working full-time only on the COVID economic recovery and nothing else. And so that, that's kind of though with having Catherine out of the EOC has been working incredibly well. We're linked in with the state and the other teams and I think is, is just really working well. So we continue to receive tons of information. If anything, I think you guys may have heard, I heard this on NPR, that one of, one of the mini crises within this crisis is an overabundance of information. And so we're working on receiving that information, cultivating it, and putting those resources on our website page, which is the yesforballast.org/resources. On that page also, I think I already told you, but we put together a business guide of Benton County businesses where businesses are updating their hours and information, whether they're open, if they're doing cool things like group size pickup for some of our restaurants, things like that. They can keep that updated and fresh for all businesses in Benton County. And partners are using it. I know in fact, the EOC is using it to figure out who they can order their lunch from, things like that. So that, that resource has been working well. This week, we're pretty excited to announce, we have stood up our online business forums, which we're calling Let's Keep Connected. This work was done in partnership with folks at the Foundry and some other partners to get this going. Basically, we're broadcasting Tuesday, Thursday at 11:30 and Wednesday evenings at 5:30 PM. These online forums where businesses can join in. We have a lineup of different speakers. We joke that it's like a variety show, but we're pretty excited to announce that next Tuesday, we have Senator Merkley will be joining us to go through the specifics of the most recent bill and the package of funding, what that will mean for folks. And also, the Director of the SBA from Portland will be on next Thursday. We're doing this today. In fact, after I get off this, I'll be hopping on that. We've got a couple of bankers on the phone today to talk about folks applying for the SBA funds. But there's a link to that in my talking points and on our website as well, if you guys want to check that out. We continue to connect manufacturers in Benton County with both the state and then we're having conversations with our EOC about the potential for them to manufacture PPE equipment here locally. We're working on that. We're also hearing directly from our Benton County businesses. We did a rapid response forum where businesses in Benton County can fill this out super easy and provide us with information. And I'd like to talk about that later as we talk about the, the potential for some Benton County funds. We are also conducting outreach to our Spanish-speaking businesses in Benton County. We have been working really closely, well, Catherine from our team speaks Spanish fluently, as does one of the SBDC business advisors, Auny. And so they are working jointly with what, CASA, UNIDOS, I always get their name wrong, like, you know, on, on a live Facebook streaming event for Spanish-speaking businesses that will be occurring next week. So we've also been actively working to either get translated copies of materials available. And if not, we're farming out some of our own information to be translated so that our Spanish-speaking businesses can make sure that they are up to speed on the resources that are available in Benton County. In the news, you guys may have read that I wanted to let you know on the business side, the eviction moratorium that the governor had put into place for personal residences was yesterday extended to also cover commercial uses as well. So that is kind of a big deal for our businesses and something they have been concerned about. And so that was a really excellent step forward for them. And while I think most of us, most everybody has been in this, just sort of playing defense, just responding to everything coming in, our team in coordination with Dave Busby and Brian out of the EOC is working on a pivot, we're kind of beginning a pivot to look at long-term recovery plans, not just these sort of immediate responding to immediate needs. So we're, we have an eye toward that. So let me pause there just on the work that we've already done and be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have on that.
Kate, I didn't quite get the, the second item you talked about was the, you have Tuesday at 11:00 and there was another timeframe you mentioned?
Oh, yes, thank you. So it's our Let's Keep Connected. So we're doing Tuesday and Thursday at 11:30 and Wednesday evening at 5:30. We're trying that just to see, we think maybe there's some businesses that are, you know, busy during the day. And so we thought we would try in the evening format. And so far, we've done two of these. The third one will be today. And I put a link to the site where we have a calendar of upcoming events that people, it's free, of course. People just put in their email address, they can participate. And in fact, we even have a, an online chat where people can type in questions and engage with the speakers that we bring on for each of those. So it's a really, really cool platform.
Thank you.
You guys. Okay. So then let's move on. Basically, I wanted to talk to you really briefly about the, that rapid response survey that we have done. I think critical to setting up any funding program is really wrapping our arms around not what we as practitioners speculate the need might be, but actually understanding that need from businesses. So the rapid response form that we put together is comprised of, it's about 20 questions and then some just general detail on who they are. So far, we've had 98 Benton County businesses respond and filled this out. It's really, really good information. In doing an initial look over the data, what we're hearing in terms of the top concerns from them are concerns about lease and debt payments, concerns about making their payroll, and of course, concerns about their product demand and not having anybody to sell to. I will say, we just rolled it out late, late last week. The responses have really been coming in at a rate that we're excited about. And I've just reached out to our partners at Organized University in the public policy program, and we are going to work with them to have students do an analysis and aggregate the data. So I'll have more kind of an actual breakdown of data for you guys, I think even as soon as next week. So here's what we know in terms of, if, if we're looking at Benton County's money to fill a gap, I kind of wanted to first let you know what we do know is available already out there. And some of you are up to speed on some of these programs. But of course, that most recent COVID bill that passed increased the amount of money for businesses in many, many different ways. First of all, there's the SBA Economic Injury Divaster Loans. Part of those also can be grants. The first 10,000 of those funds can be used for grants to pay for certain items. It's a really excellent program. We are strongly suggesting that pretty much every business apply for this, even if it's just the minimum 10,000 so they can get access to those grants. We've reached out to our SBA partners. Their commitment is to get those loan funds turned around in three days, but we are waiting to kind of hear back on what that's actually looking like in practice. And we'll know more in the coming weeks. The other biggie was the Paycheck Protection Program. This is basically a forgivable loan for eight weeks of operation. It can cover payroll, salary, interest, the interest portion on mortgage payments. It will cover the principal, but it can cover rent, utilities. It also is a really excellent program that folks need to partner with their banks and apply for. It opens up tomorrow. We have a list of local lenders that people can partner with that are, are connected up to the SBA on our website. And we're working on getting that information out. So that's an excellent program, again, meant to be this really important stopgap with basically free money for the first eight weeks. And there's also an employee retention tax credit that's on the books too. So I tell you all that to say, when we last had this discussion, we didn't know exactly what the bill was going to look like. But these are pretty substantial federally funded programs that we think can help businesses to stop the hemorrhaging. The one question that we have though, of course, is the turnaround time on the money. Looking at some of the business responses, some folks have said, hey, we need something urgently, like in the next 30 days. But as the responses went on and we knew more about the federal program, it looks to me, again, waiting on final analysis, that it looks as though more folks now are concerned about the later timeframe, that two to three month zone, maybe after these funds, they roll through the first eight weeks and use up this sort of free money. I think that's the point in time that folks seem to be a little more worried about at this point in time. So I had an opportunity to have a phone call earlier this week with Joe and Mary and Nick, and we talked about and kind of brainstormed some general policy priorities. And so this is the spot where I think I kind of wanted to throw these ideas out to you commissioners, make sure we're maybe calibrated and thinking about this correctly. So some of, some of the ideas or potential policy priorities we drew out include using the county's precious funds as sort of a one-two punch. Like, is there a way that we could implement some funding now, more immediately, that could have a positive impact, fill in any gaps, do things like that? Almost, I'm calling it a business triage, with the, the second punch being that later, long-term focus on economic recovery. And to me, this is going to be a point in time, I personally talked to a handful of businesses that are worried about rehiring, restocking with supplies when, when things do come back up online. And so maybe an eye towards the longer term. So again, a potential framework of a one-two punch type of setup. Two, understanding the gap and need, I think is really critical because there is no reason that Benton County should do these precious sources in, in a way that would be redundant to these much meatier and well-funded federal programs. So I think that's really critical. We don't yet know some of these answers, like the timing of getting those funds to businesses. And we haven't yet done the full analysis on our business data, but we're working on that. So that one, I think, is underway. Three, of course, would be any funding program that Benton County creates would be accountability of funds, eliminating abuse, creating clarity about how the funds would be used, if it's going to be a loan program, clarity on what the terms are, what the fees are, you know, who we would work with as partners, things like that. One component that I think is very important to me is a focus on businesses that were healthy going into the crisis. I don't, you know, and maybe it's harsh to say, but I think really, we're not here to rescue businesses that were already struggling before the crisis. We're here to rescue those businesses that were healthy and strong and have a strong likelihood of coming out the other side, if that makes sense. Another item that I know, Joe, was important to you was, and I think is, is the right call, I'm in the same frame of mind, is the payback of funds to the county. That is structuring this as a loan program that at some point in time has the potential for Benton County to recoup these funds and then hopefully reuse it in the future for some other method. So that could be a loan structure. There's some cool things we can do, those still make it very business friendly, where perhaps, like some other structures we've seen, we don't have the businesses make any payments for the first six months, then maybe it's interest only. But we can still structure that as a loan with, with an ultimate goal of receiving funds back to Benton County. And of course, finally, I think the last priority that, that we have, we've all talked about is using whatever funds you decide to potentially capitalize the program to leverage other people's money. And so when we talk about this, we're talking, in my mind, we're talking about looking at the state and say, hey, state of Oregon, business Oregon, we set this up, can you match what we've done? I've already begun conversations with Mark at the city about finding a way for the city to put some funds into this as well, so it's not just a county-only funding. And there may be some other opportunities as well. I know one idea that was floated was the notion of creating a fund where businesses, if Benton County were to create a fund, finding a way where individual participants in the community could donate to this fund and do some of their own matching to support our businesses as well. So I think the leveraging is the final important point. So that was a lot. That was kind of the, the five policy points. I'd like to just pause there and maybe take the temperature. And Joe, I don't know if you have anything on these policy items. And then I have just one last slide with some information about maybe some different frameworks for consideration.
One, one comment I had Kate was, you mentioned Senator Merkley's and his staff. And I was on a call yesterday morning and And I was on a call yesterday morning, and, you know, he's in DC, has that perspective, and was talking about COVID number four bill that's in the works that may, I'm sure the timetable is flexible, but it's at least three or four weeks out. And he's trying to get as much information as he can, what do we need here as far as COVID-3? Large dollar amounts being talked about. When is it getting to the people that need it? And I think it's important to give all our congressional and state folks feedback on what's actually happening on the ground, and you're in a good position to gather that information and send it back to the people that are scrambling to fill the gaping holes that we have.
Indeed. And I would say, we, I'm feeling actually really heartened. We are well-connected, partially because Sarah Means, our Regional Solutions Coordinator for the Governor's Office, asked me to be a part of her Economic Recovery Team that she's put together for the region. And so we have twice a week phone calls with her. So we have, I really feel good about this direct line up to the Governor's Office through her, through our partners at Business Oregon. But then also, we've been in close contact both with Merkley's office and some of the others as well at the federal level. They want to know what the issues are. And part of Merkley being on this call next week is for him to disseminate the information, but I think they are also very interested in having him have this opportunity to hear directly from Benton County businesses about their issues and concerns. And so we're trying to create a pipeline, not just through us, but then directly with folks.
A follow-up comment from Merkley's call yesterday on COVID-3, the stabilization funds. The estimate for Oregon's share is one and a quarter billion to one and a half for Oregon. The formula is 55% of that goes to the state, 45% to local governments. But the governor decides how that local government component is distributed. So I think that's a good one to pay attention to. And when you're talking to Sarah Means or other others in state government, make sure that our needs are being addressed.
You bet. You bet. We'll absolutely share that water.
Kate. I think that all these considerations that were made out are great. And I would be all over for really being clear about what the gaps are now and possibly spending some money in the near term, but saving some of it for understanding what those longer-term needs are going to be in order to keep our economy as resilient as possible. I look forward to hearing the next stages of evolution of potential ideas.
You bet, Dan. And that actually maybe is a good segue. Wait, I included in this slide, Jack, so this is the sixth slide. It's a nice colorful one. Just some examples, and again, I'm not looking for a policy answer today. This is more of a check-in to make sure, I think Joe and I were hoping to just, again, synchronize, make sure we're headed in the right direction as we continue to research and dig down. But what I wanted to show you were four examples of programs that we are aware of. And there's pros and cons to each one, but for you guys to think about. The first one is the Lane County model. I think we talked about this briefly on the last call. They just stood up that program. This Lane County Springfield and the cities of Eugene capitalized with $400,000 total. These were loans of up to $30,000. The way they're structured, though, is Community Lending Works was their partner in this. And it was structured in that the money that capitalized this went through as a grant to Community Lending Works. So because of the high amount of risk involved in those loans, because they were so fast hitting the ground, the notion that perhaps upwards of 40% of those would not be repaid, could be more. Community Lending Works needed that funds to come through as a grant. So if Benton County were to look at a structure like this, that would not check that box of it being a loan program where Benton County would get the money back. I have talked with Community Lending Works and their partner in our region, which is Dead Northwest. We've had a couple of phone calls. They're totally willing to partner on a program like this. The good news is they were able to profit up very quickly. Unfortunately, with loans of up to $30,000 in Lane County, they only, they did 17 loans, and within three hours had a waiting list of 300, right? So it's a small drop in the bucket, and I'm not sure maybe the right place to put our money at this time. Another model I wanted to share is Prosper Portland. Prosper's, of course, an enormous organization and well-capitalized. But they did one program I thought was interesting, where they did grants focused on the most vulnerable businesses. So those were businesses that were public-facing and had experienced more than a 25% difference in their revenue, and businesses that were owned by either Black, Indigenous, Pacific Islander, or people of color, or women-owned businesses. And businesses who were continuing to make an effort to keep their folks employed. So there is a potential of a carve-out of some funds for our minority in women-owned businesses in Benton County. And again, equity is something we're really thinking carefully about and want to look at. So that's another possibility. One that I'm kind of interested in, again, don't mean an answer today, but is this notion of funding, placing some funds, this would not be a loan, this would be a pass-through, but into programs that are already available. Our partner at the WIV, Heather DeSard, they had put into place, not just in our WIV, but in many of them, a layoff aversion program. So these were funds that were available for businesses. She told me that the average award that they did was maybe $4,000. These are funds to basically help businesses pivot to doing something new. So in a lot of cases, it was, hey, I need to get a computer so my person can work remotely, and if we have that, then they can continue working for us. But some folks got really clever. One business wanted to pivot to a delivery model, and they needed to rent a car. And so they were able to use these very flexible funds to change their business model and keep folks employed. I did talk with Heather DeSard. She is willing and able that if it's something Benton County would like to help capitalize, that she could ensure that those monies would only be used for Benton County businesses, which basically would create a small Benton County fund. But that might be something worth considering if we don't want to reinvent the wheel. Again, it is not a loan. It is just money that goes out in the form of a grant, so there wouldn't be a repayment structure in Benton County. The last one that I think is really where we want to spend some time exploring is some sort of local loan program. I have had conversations with our partners at the COGS. They are willing to play a role in this in terms of conducting the due diligence, doing the loan review, perhaps the application review. I'm also, I know Mary's on the call, I'm also very sensitive to not creating a loan program that creates a whole bunch of overhead or work for your finance department. So I think having partners in this process would be important as well. So those were really four kind of different samplings of models that we've been seeing for you guys. And Joe, I know you've got Mary kind of teed up and ready to maybe talk about the funds and the potential for capitalization as well. So that was everything that I had that will remain here while we continue the discussion.
Kate, I'd like Mary to go and jump in to give the board an idea of what magnitude of dollars we're talking about, because I think that will help inform maybe what direction we end up going. So Mary, would you please interject?
Sure. Commissioners, there's a couple of places we could look to infuse cash. One of them being our HUD loan, what were funds that, those are the housing improvement loans over time that if we receive a certain amount of year, then the repayment becomes de-federalized. And we have in that fund, we used that fund just recently for the standby need program. So it's discretionary once it becomes de-federalized. Sometimes we send the money over to the consortium for housing programs, depending on the repayment we get over a year. So, but in that fund, we have probably about $170,000 available that can be used on anything. It right now isn't budgeted for anything, so it's sitting in the fund. Was there a question about that?
Mary, please continue.
And then the other source of funds is our lottery fund that we budgeted a contingency of $115,000, thereabout. As a contingency, the rest of the lottery funds have been budgeted for. The largest piece of that was $250,000 for fairgrounds improvement. So there's a contingency. That doesn't mean we have the money, because the lottery funds are probably one of the revenue sources that are going to go down. So we have to look at the use of our lottery funds. So I'm kind of hedging on the lottery funds availability, just because I don't think we're going to have the same level of lottery revenue, because they've closed all the video lottery areas down. So in a really good world, the discretionary funds I think that we could use would be $285,000, which includes $150,000 of kind of uncertain lottery funds. But for sure, $170,000 from the HUD loan program.
And Mary, just to clarify, the HUD, I'll call it the CDBG funds, is that the fund you're talking about? So relative to that $170,000, that would pretty much deplete that fund, would it not?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
It does get, you do get repayments. We get anywhere from one to two. There's not that many loans left there, but we may get $20,000 a year in repayment.
And you commented that we had been occasionally passing some of those funds over to the Community Services Consortium for their home repair program, and that program is now being passed to Dead Northwest, so.
Okay. The way that works, the way that works is if we receive, we have like four different areas that we had these loans out. So if we receive over $25,000 of repayment in any one of those programs, then those monies have to be used on housing. So we would give them to the program that does housing in the area. If we get less than $25,000 a year repayment, then it remains with the county and is what they call de-federalized. So it's kind of, a lot of the loans are less than $25,000. So if we get more than two loans in a year in a particular program, then we have to turn the money over to housing.
Interesting. And so given the funding levels, it's, leverage is going to be really important. And so I'll go back to Kate's options. And I agree that the video lottery dollars probably should be safe, because we want to make sure that Kate and her team can continue to operate in the next biennium. So it seems that some of the short-term pivot funds through a vehicle like the workforce investment board might be a good thing to think about, small dollars. But then to perhaps just hold our power for a while and figure out how we can best leverage the Federal Cares Act money and any potential, or bill coming out of Congress and state bills for that matter.
I also had leverage highlighted. The dollars that are obviously available through Benton County are pretty limited. The Lane County model of, and I was aware of this program when they got it started, a little over two weeks ago. And they were hoping for $600,000, and they got 400. But with so much demand, and so 17 people got funded, or 17 organizations got funded. And I'm pretty sure it wasn't, they weren't prioritized, or it was, I'm thinking first come, first served, which may not be the best way to go. But in their case, they did get a partner to actually implement that program. But I don't think that's a good model for us. I'm glad you've been on this whole call, Kate, because the first part was talking about immediate needs for people and getting through the next month or two. And I think those, off the top of my head, that's where our, if we have any discretionary dollars, that's where we should be focused and figure out how to leverage a modest amount of Benton County dollars to keep things running in the short term, and maybe more focus on a month or two from now when we've got more clarity what our budget is, what's coming in from the federal and state levels, and do more strategic dollars rather than the Lane County model, which is understandable. Businesses are hurting. How can we help? But if you're helping 17 out of 300, to me, that's not, probably not the best use of county dollars.
Pat, this is Annabelle. I think you make a very good point. I think being strategic is really important. And we really don't know exactly what the income, what will be incoming from the federal government. I don't know, Mary, did you get my email on the SRS dollars?
I did.
Okay. Well, there are, we did get some pure Wolf Dollar, but I don't remember what parameters were on those in terms of spending. But again, I'd like to just kind of hold those two until we get a little bit better feel for what we're facing here. And so I like all the ideas that are presented. It's just, it's going to have to be a policy question of putting all these things on the list and kind of really determining where our best thinking should be on where we spend it.
So I guess, direction to you, Kate, just keep pedaling as fast as you can and try to bin down where Benton County funds can do the most good to keeping our businesses in business. But the idea of partners, and I think your office is critical to getting information about what federal and state dollars are available, how to apply, what the likely timetable is on actually receiving dollars. And that goes back to our electeds and Senator Merkley, and this much has been allocated. I mean, it's a pipeline, and there's a lot of money starting in the pipeline, but precious little is showing up at the other end. And I think that's where you can really be valuable to guide businesses where to put their efforts.
I have one other question for Kate, and that has to do with some of the small businesses that are located in our outline community. that are located in our outlined communities, like thinking about, for example, the market at Kings Valley, I don't know if John Boyce is still open in Alsey, and those are the kinds of things I was thinking about in terms of established businesses, and if there's any contact from them at all.
I can't speak to the two you specifically mentioned, we can certainly reach out and see how they're doing. We have, we have included Monroe, we have, we're doing three-time-a-week calls with our, all the Benton County partners that our office is leading, including the Salomons Chamber, the Business Association of Monroe, BAM, as they like to be called, and kind of partners them all around, but I don't know specific to your question about the Kings Valley or Alsey market, but we'd be happy to check in with them.
So, Julie's at least asking them to see how they're faring.
Of course, no, yeah, and we're doing a lot of that, and just kind of outreach, checking in and talking with people. We're basically trying to work through an entire list of businesses, this is very aspirational. We're starting with folks in our trade sector, folks in our database, but we have the county investors list, at least of those businesses who pay for the personal equipment tax, and so we are logging all those and trying to make sure that we are at least touching everybody once. It's going to take a while, but yeah, we want to be talking to everybody.
And one other comment in terms of related to my comment about these rural businesses, you know, with the order to people stay in place, these are very vital to those little communities out there.
Absolutely.
Kate or Mary, any other information you'd like to share, or anything else you need from the board at this point?
No, I think it's a really good conversation, it's just that there's a lot of things happening right now, and I think we just keep it on our radar where the needs are and what we can really do.
Yeah, and this is Kate, and I totally agree, and I think, I think if nothing else, I want to leave you all, you know, knowing that we absolutely have our finger on the pulse of both the businesses and folks downstream as well as upstream, and we're really trying to monitor all this, and we'll continue to listen and keep an eye on if there's a pivotal moment that we think is the right time for Benton County to jump in, we'll bring this conversation back up, but we'll continue to monitor what other communities are doing, and kind of, I think this will take shape as we move forward, especially as we know more about the federal component, that's really going to be the key, and we'll monitor and communicate that back with you guys.
Great. Kate, when you're ready to come back to one of our policy meetings, please let me know in advance if you could.
You bet, then I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Kate. Yeah, thank you all, I really appreciate it.
Hey, Kate, one last question for you.
For your team.
Kate, what's the best number for small businesses to call to gain assistance from your office?
Well, I think I first would say we prefer an email instead of a phone call, since we're all working remotely, so we have a generic email address that'll make it really easy, it's economic.developments@corvallisoregon.gov, economic.developments@corvallisoregon.gov. If they do need to make a phone call, they can certainly call my voicemail line, I'm checking that multiple times a day, 541-766-633. All right, we'll stay in touch, I'm going to log out for now, and thank you all, really appreciate the time.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all we had teed up for you today, commissioners.
Kate?
Okay.
Annabelle or?
What's our next reunion here?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
Nine o'clock.
That's it, I'm excited. Unless somebody else thought, right?
Oh, Sam?
Thank you all, have a good morning, first, what's left of it?
Kate?
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.